Opportunity to hear from Lewis District Inspector Ed Ripley about measures taken by the police to tackle youth antisocial behaviour in New Haven and across the district. Followed by a chance to ask questions.
Chair, I guess perhaps it might be better to have four or five reversed? And get the public getting their questions out there.
Well, I know some of the questions, so I'm going to leave it to the inspector first.
Thank you. I'll stand up, Mike. Hi, everybody. I'm Ed Ripley. I am the Lewis District Inspector, appointed to this district back in September last year. And I appreciate the opportunity to come to this meeting to be able to explain some of the work we've been doing around youth-related antisocial behaviour, which is very current following the incident last week. So, back in October, we saw an increase in youth-related antisocial behaviour, but that was at a very low level. When I say low level, it's very impactful on communities, very impactful on residents, all that happens, regardless of the severity or the nature of it. But it was people knocking on doors, damaging property, low-level damage, just really causing nuisance. My team deployed to New Haven, Lewis, Peacehaven, Seaford. We identified various hotspot locations, areas where we knew that kids would gather, where we had majority of problems being reported to the police. And we narrowed down several hotspot locations in New Haven. I'm going to focus in on New Haven at this point. So, we identified around 60 kids who continuously panged to our notice. And we worked with those kids in terms of, first of all, dispersing them from the locations. Secondly, going to their meeting, their parents, in terms of why they're being dispersed, saying, 'This is what your son or daughter have been doing.' And a lot of the parents got on board with us. And we saw a significant reduction in antisocial behaviour at those locations. And we managed to really focus our efforts on around about 15 to 20 children. Bringing it forward now, we have a group of eight kids. And you will see large groups, but this particular group of eight kids are causing significant problems and harm for us in New Haven and Lewis, and often in Seaford as well. And that group of eight unfortunately were involved in the incident last week. So, we knew following our operation back in October, that the kids who we had left over, the 15 to 20, were involved at the time as a trend in motorcycle thefts and motor thefts. And they were involved and connected with those thefts. And between February and March, there were around 75 thefts of motorcycles in the New Haven area alone. And I know that that group would have generated around £35,000 for a process of crime by selling those parts on or selling those bikes on. So, it's really significant. What also identified was an overlap with Brighton. And the team over at Brighton were experiencing the same sort of issues with people who are over there coming over to here. And it's a really organised network, especially if you've got a high-powered motorbike and you're 16 years old, to be able to get rid of that very quickly is very, very difficult unless you know the people and the process is followed. But what that enabled us to do, enabled us to link the intelligence that we generated from the arrests we made in that operation to the antisocial behaviour and really hone down and focus on those eight people. And that was then interesting in drug supply in Lewis, because quite often we hear, and you hear in the news, around county lines, drug lines operating. And I'll explain briefly what that is shortly. But it was really interesting to get a picture and a feel of, was this group involved in drug supply? What was the reason for them stealing motorcycles? What was the reason for going to these areas? And the two were separate. So, I said I'd come back to county lines. The county lines that you hear about, the easiest way to describe it is a telephone, which has got drug users' details on it. And I know I get it on a Friday night, I get a text message from Domino's Pizza that would say to me, 'You can buy a large Domino's pizza, get a medium one for free.' It's a very similar situation, the text messages going out on this line. It offers people drugs, buy two, get one free. We haven't seen that in Lewis, and we haven't seen that in New Haven, we certainly haven't seen it in Seaford. But what we have seen is we've seen localised dealing. We've seen drugs being brought into the area and then distributed within the area, which is different to county lines activity. The group that we're looking at aren't involved in that. So, it's really then focusing on what they were involved in and why they were doing it. So, we've got this group who are really going around, but the escalation in their offending is violence escalation. And we know that some of them have been in possession of knives. We know from the incident last week that one of them escalated and decided to use a knife in an assault. And thankfully, not to downplay what happened at all, victim of that is doing well and is recovering. In fact, victim of that is in this room. But in terms of what we're doing going forward with that group. So, to date, the top two people, I'd say, who are most often coming to our notice have been arrested between 39 times. They've been arrested for a variety of offences, from violence offences to theft-related offences. They've been to court on one occasion, and on that occasion they refer to the Defending Service and to the Sussex Youth Partnership. And of course, they're required to engage with those services, and they have engaged, but they continue to offend. So, we're now looking at what options do we have available? What can we do to continue to disrupt those people and really be relentless in what we're doing and to divert them from what they're doing? Now, there are several schemes that have been introduced. There's a scheme called Reboot, which has been introduced, and that looks at taking offenders down to really simplify what they're doing. Identify what they're doing first of all, look to see what could be done in terms of support and diversion, which I think is key when you're talking about it with young people. And then building up an evidential package so that when it does come to the point where, let's say, some of them get through the net and we have to go to court with them, the court have an understanding around that and a picture around this person's offending and what has been done to support that person. And then the options that they have at court are to put more robust measures in place. I haven't got any statistics for you yet around Reboot, it's a fairly new scheme. But just the structure of it and just the way that it's been put forward and sold to us is very promising, and I think that we will start to see some positive results. Just before the incident that happened last week, I stopped a group of people following a group gathering in the road off the one-way system there. And I searched one of the youths who was in possession of a power knife, a kitchen power knife. And this is the sort of thing they're taking, they're taking household items. You hear in the media about zombie knives and people running around with machetes. They're not using that. They're using, consuming really small knives, but they are damaging enough, a knife is enough. So, what was a really turning, real turning point with that was that the parents attended. And ordinarily, they are, they're not very supportive of the police. And the first response was, you know, from the dad was, 'What are you doing with my son? I can't believe this is happening, but...' I then showed you the knife, and you could see the colour change from his face. And there was that sudden realisation that this isn't playing anymore. This isn't going out and causing problems on a Friday night and having a bit of a laugh. This is really serious with serious consequences. And for me, that was a turning point. That links into reboot, that links in, gives me a glimmer of hope if the parents are on board. And we've seen this, I started off by saying about the 60 that we had and getting the parents on board and reducing it down to that group. For me, it was that if we can get the parents on board with those eight, and we can support the parents, then we have an opportunity to divert those individuals as well. And that is what my team are focusing on going forward with those individuals. Yes, we will continue to arrest, and yes, we will be relentless in terms of stopping and searching and really focusing on those hotspot locations and doing what we're there to do, which is to enforce. Drawing support from other partners, joint action group meeting going down, proposing a plan to get them on board and deployed with us. There is a real appetite for that within local authority, East Sussex Fire and Rescue Service, and CDA, target youth services, they really want to come and help. And actually, it's really important, I think, just to mention at this stage, that I know there's an appetite and desire in the community to help as well. One of my PCSOs is attending a meeting on Friday with Cheltenham Football Club, and over the leisure centre who wants to get involved, CBA, Air Cadets, having conversations with the independent advisory group who look at what we do and oversee what the Sussex Police do, they want to get involved as well. So, we're drawing all sorts of expertise and we're finding all sorts of opportunities that we can use to perhaps look at things alternatively, rather than just going at our enforcement. But I reassure you, we are doing absolutely everything that we possibly do to tackle this problem. Yes, these eight are extremely challenging, but they know that we aren't going to stop them what we're doing. And actually, we're starting to see a bit of a term in terms of behaviour. And in terms of that group continuing to be together, they're starting to disperse. I think it would be wrong for me to say that it's solved and resolved and we won't see any continuing issues going forward. I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. But I think with this approach that we've planned and that we've proposed, that we're going to see some real results. And I'm more than happy to continue to feed that back into you so that we can work together. So, any questions?
When you say eight, do you mean eight in New Haven or eight across the board?
No, eight in New Haven.
Yeah, because it's not just the eight in New Haven that's the problem. We've got people coming over from Lewis, obviously another group over there, and people from Brighton. So, when you say eight, actually that maybe comes to 16 or 24, that they're all friends and they're all coming together.
Yeah.
And then that makes me with a big problem. So, how do you tackle those?
You're absolutely right, and you're right to raise it. We're doing the same with that group as well, with those groups as well.
So, how do you still come in here, though?
But we can't. We can't, unless there are, so with the, following the arrest the other day, we were able to put strict bail conditions on to stop them from coming into the area. And some of them live in the area, so to overcome any problems there, you put non-association bail conditions on. And that controls them, and that enables us to get involved with them and have more control around their movements and what they're doing.
Is, sorry, is there no such thing as tagging anyone?
I mean, just the person's convicted.
I mean, when someone's been arrested 39 times, there's got to become a point where...
The problem is they're not scared of you anymore. They're not scared of you anymore. They don't care about getting arrested, that's the problem.
Yeah, and the frustration with this is, we do what we do with a view to convicting somebody. That's what we do. And if we haven't got that support when it goes to court, or we haven't got that robust action when it goes through that process, then we've done out of it, and it's down to them.
What age are we talking about here?
We're talking about this group of eight, what sort of age are we talking about? Fourteen, 14 to 19 years old.
Fourteen to 16, okay. So, if they're under the age of 16, and that person, say, for example, was convicted, what would happen to that individual? Would it be under mental health instruction or would it be a care for your map?
Who knows?
No.
No, because there are many sort of disposal options, but there are many options available to magistrates. It all depends what the person says, the reason why they say they're doing things. They could, they could claim that there is an issue that is causing them to behave the way they're causing, especially involved. It's not as simple as saying that if they say this, this will happen, it's reproof.
Isn't it quite, I mean, I'm not, I'm just living in here the last couple of years, but I'm from South London, Surrey, and we always had this problem, and it was a growing problem from when I was a youth.
Yes.
And it grew massively. And with the whole sort of bike thefts and stuff like that, there's been recent gangs on that, and they've been spreading out to Crawley and things like that. So, I'm wondering whether the bike part was to do with gang-related, and now New Haven set of youths are trying to create that? Or are they somehow, I know they're very completely literate these days, are they linked with any Facebook groups?
So, yes, we've looked at Facebook groups, certainly Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, you know, there's a lot of information about them on their sites. Obviously, we have to be, we have to have authorities to look at that. It has to be in connection with an investigation. But we do look. And yeah, you're quite right, we do draw a lot of information. In terms of the, in terms of the bike thefts, there was a trend. It was fashionable at that particular point, the steel bikes. And yes, we've seen that over in Hastings, we've seen it in Crawley. Is this a nationwide or was it a nationwide problem? We're now not seeing that. We're seeing an elegant shift in offending to looking at theft on motor vehicles. And that's come back into fashion.
I was about to say that, but is it the same with the lads that have been breaking into cars around Lord Avenue, New Eglon Avenue?
Possibly, possibly. I honestly don't, honestly don't know for sake, but there are a lot of people, it's easy to break into cars, and unfortunately, people still leave bags in cars, leave money in cars, and it's very easy to get a property.
Yeah, just moving forward, you've identified eight perpetrators.
Yeah.
And you're going around different avenues and trying to deal with them.
Yeah.
Whether you go softly, softly, or you're on this course, that course. And when you get to a point where that's finished, you've run out of options, and when you start going to, 'We've got to do something with these properly now,' when do we go for stage your sentences or when do we...
When you say take them out of the community.
Then they're killed somewhere.
Do we have to wait that far?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Hello, sorry, I'm a bit late. I need to turn a chief inspector and district commander for the area. Yeah, just listening to all of that, if I get here, then I think everybody can see me without just in their necks. Yeah, just to let you know that I've come here tonight, and you're not the first time I've been to and been given some of the same messages. And listening to this, it's quite clear that here in New Haven, and in Lewis, and in Upfield, and in Hailsham, and in Crowborough, and in Eastbourne, we've got very similar problems. We've got lots of young people. And I say lots, lots is unfair. We've got some young people, we don't know where the line is in terms of their behaviour. As I'm listening to Ed here, he's explaining a great deal of what his team are doing and has identified those eight young people. We've got them on a list, we know who they are. And yeah, and there is a frustration for us and for you, and no doubt for those young people's parents and anybody who might be trying to teach them about what we can actually do to start bringing them into some kind of control and some sort of informed lives that they're in. As you say, where do we go to? Unfortunately, well, I say unfortunately, I don't think it is unfortunately, that's not our decision. When young people come to notice of us so often, like these eight young people, they will all be being looked at by the youth defending team. And within the youth defending team, you have got us as police, you've got education, you've got event managers, event representatives, you've got lots of agencies who work with young people, and they are the experts about what is the best course of action for that one individual young person. A lot of us think, well, it would be great to lock them up and throw away the key. And in some ways, I think, yeah, you're absolutely right, because then my resources wouldn't be running around after you all the time. But that isn't seen as the option, and we are in some ways reliant on them. But that's not to say they don't do a good job. Last year, this kind of behaviour probably bubbled up to a greatest degree in Crowborough. And what we managed to do last summer, when the weather was good and young people decided to participate in such behaviour, is we targeted two ringleaders that were definitely the ringleaders up there. We got injunctions against them eventually. It took us a while, but we got injunctions, and that actually limited their behaviour. So, it got them things like curbs, and it gave them restrictions of where they could go in town. It gave them restrictions about who they could be with, so they were no longer to be with their friends. So, that, if you like, is the absolute panacea of what we want with some of these young people. In order to get that, it takes a lot of work, which is where my request will always come to you, and it's always come to lots of members of the public. We need information about what the young people are doing in order to get those injunctions. So, if you know where there's young people doing antisocial behaviour, let us know. Don't think, 'Oh, the police will know about that, they've been to our meeting and everything else.' Do email us, let us know, because we can use your information. We can turn that into either statements, or we may be able to put that straight in front of a court to be able to support those injunctions when we get to that point of needing them. So, that, if you like, is the escalation process. We've got the eight on the list, they will either be going through the yacht process into court and get some criminal behaviour order or something similar to that move, or if they don't get that and they continue to behave, then we will be looking at injunctions.
So... I'm assuming, sorry, I'm assuming that what you're talking about, you say it's like the 14 upwards. In the last probably eight months that have raised by the marina, we must have had somewhere between 15 and 20 armed burglaries or attempted break-ins, especially to the carriage area. And the, you know, kids involved are probably just a wee bit below, you know, they look more likely 13, 14-year-olds. Often it's on the way back from school. But on one occasion, what was that time, 2.40 or something in the morning? And you wonder what on earth are sort of, you know, kids at that age being allowed out? But a lot of it is, you know, taken place on the way back from school. So, although you're concentrating on your main target, with that group on the next, because you look at them, where are they ever going to graduate into your...
Just thinking into what the gentleman's saying there, do you still have a school liaison, officer?
I think youth officers, yeah, they do, yeah.
You used to have Matt Holt around here.
Matt's still a lot, isn't he?
He's still here?
Yeah.
He's still here, is he?
Yeah.
Because we don't see him anymore. But I was working fire station, and there was a collective of police there for a while, then you sucked everybody back to HQ.
The teams took Matt, didn't they?
We don't see much of him. I was going to link that on something else, there's a limit, the problem is again, it's a limited presence as well, I think. I know you often have that problem, you're always going to have that thrown at you, and they're talking about throwing 250 more officers back into subjects.
Yeah.
But the presence around three cars sort of doing the Lewis-Brighton-Seaford triangle isn't a lot, is it? It's a cover, and especially when you're saying you've got it going on in Crowborough, Hailsham, Seaford, you've got it going on on the road in place, it doesn't look very good, does it? You've got so much going on and not a lot to cover.
So, a couple of things there. So, the people who, the other people, the other kids who are potentially going to step up when we sort out this group are already on our radar. Out of those six teens, the people that we continue to work with, with the parents, are the ones that Matt gets involved with, that we're involved with, and with the schools. So, that work continues in an effort to try and stop them from escalating. And when I said about this reboot scheme, they are referring to that reboot scheme so that they, before they offend, basically, so that they are diverted and they're taken away from the opportunities to actually offend. That's happening anyway.
We provided you with quite a lot of CCTV pictures because we've got CCTV in our garage. And I think one of the frustrations for us is that we're trying to give you the information that you need, but the feedback that we get from that is minimal. And in one particular case, they had a letter to say the case is closed. It was a theft on a bike, but it was very clear on the CCTV pictures that the kid walking out with a wheel over his shoulder. What we don't know is what is actually happening to any of this information that we're providing to you. And in fact, last Friday, the Friday before, we provided you with more CCTV pictures showing very clearly breaking into our garage, taking things out of the car. We don't know whether you're using any of that or whether I'm sending feedback on that at all, which is quite frustrating.
It is frustrating, it is, because what should be happening is the person who's investigated has to be in contact with you, you are updating. Arrests have been made in relation to armed burglaries and theft on vehicles. Were you aware of that? Have you been updated around that? Okay, so that is, that's, so while I'm taking this, I need to look and I need to talk to other people around ensuring that you're updated, because that won't happen quickly, because to some extent it's a mindset and, you know, around making time, making time to speak to victims of crime and speak to witnesses. So, I will take that away from you.
We do understand it's a resource issue, and hopefully, as this gentleman says, some of the resources that hopefully you're going to be bringing in will have some impact in our area.
So, yeah, so going back to what you said, I have, for Lewis District, I have 15 PCSOs and six PCs and two sergeants. And they, as I said about the hotspot locations, it brings them into these locations in New Haven every single day at key times to patrol those locations. They are always, they are always around, so when there's an early team that comes on, the early team will come and do that. When there's a late team that comes on, the late team will come and do that. So, at any one time, there are around six officers, including PCSOs and PCs, who will be patrolling those locations.
So, quite, I'm sorry, some of these vehicles are marked, these vehicles are it?
No, no, they're not.
Just we don't see a police car?
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's not a police presence, but...
So, they are doing that.
Can I just talk to you about some resources?
Yeah.
Since these troubles have started, I've noticed a deployment of resources, it's been visible.
Okay.
That, to me, is reactive rather than preventative. Is there any, what's, this thing's happened now.
Yeah.
How, and then I'm guessing, because you mentioned so many different areas, these resources are going to be redeployed?
No, no, they're not. So, when you, it's a classic example of this. Something happens, people start noticing. And my resources have been out since November time last year in each of these locations. That's how we've, that's how we've been able to identify so many kids and work with so many kids and really focused out. If we weren't out, we wouldn't be able to do that work. So, it's probably that people are going to start to notice more now because people are...
Aware.
More aware, they're more concerned, because it's escalating, something has happened, and people are more concerned, so they're looking and checking. But we've always been there. I think there's a real misconception. It started happening when police stations were closed, we've started to move in and co-operate with other organisations and the council. This misconception that we weren't there anymore. Now, I'll come back to your point about Saxon House, is that it is used infrequently by my team, but it doesn't mean that my team aren't out on the ground. People come from all over East Sussex to book on duty at Lewis. So, Lewis, that police station at Lord Street is a more central, more convenient location for those officers. But half of my team is deployed down here, and they will use Saxon House, or they will come back at the end of their shift, they'll just stay out the entire shift if they're coming out.
I had an incident in West Brom, I quite well know, and I've had a number of different officers attend to my home. And one particular, I think, I think maybe, so I'm not sure, he's a nurse, is it Nellie? He's come to my property, and he was saying to me, I've said to him, 'I've seen a lot of you around, but it's been times where it's been quite predictable. So, I'm aware of when you're coming and going.' These youths aren't quite youths, they're young adults that aren't stupid, they're aware. When I was a young youth as well, and I worked, obviously, in South London, we were all quite fully diagnosed, quite aware and knew what we couldn't, couldn't get away with as well, you know? And, you know, things like that. I know with the council, in some areas have gone up in price, I mean, our council tax has gone up in price to help things with more employment in policing, things like that. But unfortunately, he's a nurse from a clinical secret or Lewis, I'm not quite sure where he was from, but did mention to me that it takes two or three days for you to get back to people, and they call 101 or 919, because it's not many of them on the beat. By that time, it's kind of all diluted, some people have forgotten about what exactly has happened, or some people have lost CCTV when they've had it, and then. So, it kind of doesn't reassure me that much. And when I mentioned to him, well, because the council tax has gone up, obviously, we're getting resources, it's getting more policing in the local areas, and unfortunately, those policing actually goes to more busy air stations like Eastbourne and Brighton. And I said, 'All right, okay.' I said, 'Well, the smaller areas like Lewis, New Haven, Peacehaven, and surrounding other areas need probably just as much because there's a lot of housing, and I don't like to, you know, pigeonhole people, but a lot of housing situations, and people coming from different areas, not so rough, into, you know, splitting up into other areas.' And there are other problems, not just, obviously, what happened with flood and night, with job problems and things like that from adults as well. And I've noticed that when I've driven cars and you're running, you need to go and get the oil, and it's all daylight. And I just think, wow, you know, what's actually going to happen with the extra policing within these smaller areas as opposed to keep concentrating on really bigger towns that already got the amount of police that they need?
Yeah, just to reassure you, or be reassured.
I'm not going to explain, but...
No, no, I'm with you, I'm with you all the way. Okay, so, I mean, I think, and I'll try to keep this as concise as possible, we all know that policing services were cut. What happened when policing services were cut is everybody was very good at telling all of you that we weren't going to be able to do things anymore. And I think therefore it became noticeable when you didn't see us. We, when we got those cuts and we'd been mowed, we also felt like we didn't have enough people to do everything. But as we've gone on over the last couple of years, we've started to work out how we can do things, which is what Ed was talking about with visibility. And all of my inspectors now have, if you like, those engagement patrols, where they will go to an area and be visible. So that's what you're now seeing, because we responded to what we realised was a big problem when we shrank resources. Resources are beginning to increase again, like you say, our PC Nels is probably, and we, we don't get, we have different teams of types of policing. So Ed looks after neighbourhood policing, which is the PCSOs and the problem solving officers, which is why he's got those eight, eight young people. PC Nels will come from a response team. So when you need somebody there now, on a grade one, as we call it, as in you phone 099, and there's a situation where there's somebody safety at risk, they're the people who do those response calls, the people who come on the blue lights, and PC Nels will be one of those.
So you have different teams and a different amount of PC Nels?
That's right, yeah. Chances are, PC Nels will be based at Lewis, I think he is, they do switch them sales round. And when we get the increases, I can assure you the increases are going to all areas, because at the moment, and I can't remember name, one of the new recruits is definitely based at Lewis, because I saw her there the other day. There'll be some based at Upfield, there's some based down at Eastbourne, and while they're being tutored, they will be out on those hubs. Even if they're not increasing the numbers on the hubs, because they're not particularly my team, although I have some influence over them, we don't, we don't respond to calls according to where you picked up your bag, if you like. When the call comes in, we can now see where every police car is on a map, and the call handler will be able to send the nearest unit. So even if, for example, it's a unit that would ordinarily book on at Hastings, that's been over at Brighton dealing with something, if they're coming through the area and the call handler can see that, they will have to come to be sent to your job.
And you just need more of that.
Women like more of everything. But, I mean, I, yeah, it just seems like these little towns are being a little bit neglected. And obviously with kids, youth, or young adults, whoever sees that and has, unfortunately, takes the opportunity. I think in fairness, our demand has increased, and I will come to you in a second, I forgot to do this. I think the demand that I'm certainly seeing over the last couple of years is increasing, whether that is because of reduced policing, I think society's changing in general, I think there's been reduced resourcing in lots of things like education, social care. And we're beginning to see the impact of that, but I really want to work with all of you and everyone else and try and get it better again.
Was, I'm sorry to keep carrying on, but CCTV in the area, could there be more of that then to help you? I don't know, I don't know how much we've got.
I honestly can't.
We've got it in the high street.
There's three cameras in the town centre that the town council have.
I'm sorry, but even the Marina has CCTV across the other side of there to support Marina, they also have a megaphone that speaks out to children who are jumping into the waters, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, surely they must have hundreds of streets. We would make recommendations, or if someone came to us and said about putting, the town council, for example, came to us and said, should we be putting CCTV in this area, then we would give them our opinion.
I mean, that particular roundabout down by the Co-op, I mean, if you had one central unit there, that pretty much covers the entire road as well as the park.
Do you have a van, right, with a mask on roof? That visually, to me, that says a lot, to any, that's a deterrent in itself.
There's a void there, wasn't there? We had to say that Morrison's had seen it, and they had a security company come in with the CCTV, and the kids just ignored it.
The CCTV is different to a police mod van.
Well, I believe you can't take these kids to call unless you've got greater evidence of these days, otherwise, there's nothing you can do.
And I'm actually struggling with that moment, because I'm the victim of Sunday's attack. I've been informed by the DC in charge that these youths may get off with a minor charge rather than GBH, simply because there is no evidence of some person potentially actually stabbing you, you know, because there's no actual physical evidence, because I didn't see, because I was on the ground in a fetal position, because I didn't see the blade enter my skin, I am being told that the situation is that these children could get off with a minor charge. Where do you go with that?
Wow.
Take the police car along that road looking for CCTV.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have certain amount of CCTV, they have it outside the mouth pass.
The problem is, the problem is unfortunately, you know.
Can I let the gentleman in the red, who's been waiting patiently?
There is a question, I'd first like to relay an incident that occurred on Friday past in the afternoon. I'd like the town to get some evening meal, and this was about four forty-five in the afternoon, part of the car park, walked through between Peacock and the water car park. There was two middle aged gentlemen, one was wandering about and the other was sitting down, looking at me very intently. Now, I've been trained in reading body language, and he was weighing up his chances, or he chose not to. And I walked down the zigzag, I came round, and it was three years sitting on the steps there, the citizen advisor officer. Two lads, one girl, they called out, do you smoke? Well, that's the old trick in the book, isn't it? I said, no, obviously not. But after I got my dinner, I chose to take a different route back to the car park. Now, when we had the PCSOs in this town, in spite of what you just said, and I'm referring to Chris, Carla and Rosie, they used to walk, they used to move these people on. You know, I used to chair the neighbourhood panel in the valley, and it was steered by those three PCSOs. When Carla and Rosie moved on, then I've become police officers on the back country, Chris has been moved to Lewis. We do not see a PCSO walking through New Haven, my life's only not seen one for two years. So my question is, has these instances escalated since we no longer see PCSOs in town?
No, because the PCSOs patrol New Haven daily.
We're not seeing one for two years.
Bruce Marchant still comes down to New Haven daily.
Right, really?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, they used to call in their house for cups of tea.
That's natural.
But because they all lived out, the, that panel just fell apart, there was just no longer...
I know, I know.
And that was, that was intelligence running around.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to draw this to a halt, because we've got quite a full thing. Thank you for coming, but also, is there things that we can do? And the reason I say that is because I'm chairman of god knows how many different things. And I was just thinking, one of the problems that I know exists, because I pick up the litter, is up at the new pump track there, which I know there's dealing going on there. So if we actually close the road so that, you know, there couldn't be cars dealing from the back there. And the other thing I was thinking about is, what about bike marking? Because I know there's been several small bikes marked. Is there anything that we can do? Because I laughed at my son, and because in his garage, he has got a metal O-ring concreted into his garage, and a chain that, you know, you take about three hours with a welding torch to get around. And he said, it's twenty grand, Dad, and they'll get a couple of grand for it if they pinch it. And I thought it was a joke until all these things came out. So can you address the people and say some of the things? Because I was horrified to hear that, you know, people are breaking into garages down the Marina, because I hadn't heard that. I'd heard about all the problems at the West Quay, I'd heard about problems at the new pump track, which I have to say, happened exactly the same when we put the first skateboard in. We had all sorts of things, and then gradually, the older ones went at a certain time, the younger ones went in early, and it seemed to level itself out and the kind of trouble disappeared. But is there anything more positive that you can do so that we can help you?
I, I, I think really, we need to sit down and talk about pump track.
Okay.
And what's, what's happening down there, and what needs to happen to stop those problems.
Okay, well, if you arrange with the town clerk, then, you know, and Lewis District Council, then we'll, 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 things. But the same thing happened before, I can assure you, and in the end, the youngest, youngest ones went at a different time to the elder ones, but...
Yeah, Craig, can I just quickly talk about the pump track? I've been quite cross that for many, many reasons, because of time, I won't record it, but if we do have an opportunity to talk about pump track, I'd very much like to be involved with it. I've got the, the local contacts around skateboard builders, and there's some stuff to be done, and it's to be done by the community, it's not to be done by you guys.
Thank you, that would be really, really useful, really helpful, and I think that if we have a meeting, absolutely.
Can include you, Mark.
Can I just, sorry, I don't know your name.
Carla.
Carla. Carla, would you meet with my team? Because I think that there is an awful lot of experience that you have, and some really good suggestions that you have that we would benefit from. And what I'm really keen to do is, is that I'm really conscious that we're going as authorities and trying to sort things out, and I touched on it earlier, I need the community to come up with help. And I think just the way that you're talking and yourself as well, you just, I can see it coming together.
Does the church youth worker, Sarah, does she get in contact with you?
She's not in contact with me, no. No, she might be in contact with my PCSOs, but in terms of having a structured community approach, I haven't, I haven't got that at the moment. So if any suggestions that you have, any contacts that you have on all this, we can work on together.
Is it the same lot, I understand that they've been causing trouble at McDonald's at five in the morning, is that the same lot?
No, it's, there's, they've been overlapped, there's been some ignored, but no, but there's, McDonald's is a separate issue in a way, because McDonald's attracts, it's mainly people with vehicles, attracts them from outside the area. And actually, that's one of the draws, we said earlier about, I think you might have mentioned it earlier, about people coming in from Lewis or Brighton, that attracts them. So, but McDonald's are very, very good in terms of working with us, and, you know, if we say we've got information around this particular vehicle, they will let us know. They're very, very good.
Unfortunately, exactly, but what about reasonable force, someone defending themselves? Unfortunately, situations like you, what, what force can someone defend themselves without themselves in a position where they could be the ones who are arrested, even if they're committed?
On my particular case, I'm actually a trained martial arts practitioner, so I can manage to deal with it.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'm a trained martial arts practitioner as well, I've been 25 years, it's something I remember in my 50s. That's the advice, I would run. And to be honest with you, unless you are, unless you find yourself where you're in a position where you're backed into a corner and you have no other option, the first thing is run. Every time. If you're backed into a corner, then you have to use whatever force you, you believe you may need to use to stop that person from hurting you.
Okay, can I thank you both for coming tonight? I know it's not, and, and can I thank the public for being so tolerant? And I know it's been a bad system, and I have to say that I do agree with one or two points, because we always knew how we could get hold of Matt, and he always seemed to be there. I'm sorry, but he did, you know.
He's still there.
Yeah, but we don't see him so much. But anyway, you know, he did a brilliant job at the time, but thank you.
It'd be great to meet up with you.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, lovely.
Yeah, I promise you that.
That's great. Thanks, everyone, I very appreciate it.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, love it, Ben.
Okay.